Calling to order, Ellisville Town Council, Monday, March 13th. Pledge, Kevin?
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands what nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jimmy?
Our heavenly Father, we come before you just one more time to thank you so much for this little town we serve, and thank you for the effulminous you have here, and thank for our glory, and thank for everything you do for us, who should be with us tonight as we make the decisions that will affect us for years to come, in the name of Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Roll call.
William Ellis?
Here.
Trevor Sager?
Here.
Scott Oldham?
Pamela Samples?
Here.
Dan Swafford?
He's sitting here.
Did he?
We can't hear you, Dan. Is that on our end here? He's not muted. Is the computer volume up? Does that matter?
It would be the TV volumes.
Yeah, let's turn it up.
Hmm.
Well, that was my grandma's house.
I don't know what's going on with Russell.
Was that an age joke?
Dan, I don't know if you can hear us. Can you hear us okay, Dan? We cannot hear you. Um, all right. Yeah, Russ is in a loop. I thought he was doing a rap or something. All right, we're gonna move on. Approval of minutes for the regular meeting, February 13th and 27th. The 13th was tabled because we didn't have enough here that could vote on it.
And I don't know if we've got enough again.
Since we can't get a voice vote from Dan, is a motion?
He can hear you.
His little friend thinks that he's muted.
Yeah, he wasn't before. He's not now, no. Right. That's what I'm saying, that would be legally binding, right? If he makes a motion and approves it, thumbs up or something?
Yeah, he's too young, so yeah.
Right.
Darla says they can't vote when they're on Zoom.
I thought it was just for budgets.
She's not here to ask, so we can go ahead and make the motion and let him vote and if she, if we need to revoke with his.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of minutes for the regular meeting, February 13th. Let's break these up into two motions. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
So, for regular meeting, February 13th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting, February 13th, 2023.
Second. William Ellis?
Abstain, was not here.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford? Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Approval of minutes for the regular meeting, February 27th, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting, February 27th, 2023.
Second. William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford? Pamela Samples?
Abstain.
Motion carries.
Dan's doing his Ponzi impression. Hey. All right. Resolution 04-2023 to dispose of surplus property for the Street and Police Department.
Yes, this is an older Dodge Charger that we got to be getting rid of here towards the end of the month for April, so we can be ready to do that. It's got some issues that are going to require some major engine repairs, and we don't want to get into that with our charter, so just actually move it through that floor.
All right. And do we need to separate these, or can we take them both together?
They could both go together.
Okay.
Okay, we have two bucket trucks, one's a 1995 and the other one's a 1991, both 28 and 32 years old. They are still somewhat operational, one of them is. They both need to be have certified inspections done to them. There's a lot of maintenance that needs to be done to them to be brought up to date on a lot of things, so I would like to try to sell these as is and go towards another bucket truck future down the road.
Counsel discussion?
Also, these will be sold probably by Gov. Deals.
Okay. Any public comment? All right, maintain a motion.
Can I move to approve Resolution 04-2023 to dispose of surplus property for the Street and Police Department?
I'll second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott, are you familiar with it? Do you want to vote?
Abstain, since I don't know what we're talking about.
And Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I want to thank both Jimmy and Kip for staying up on this stuff, so I mean, it's one of the things that I'm so proud of, for the town our size, we actually have good equipment and supervisors that are on it and not just you coming to us saying, "We have to rebuild a car because it's falling apart." Thank you.
William, we missed the accounts payables.
Oh, we did, didn't we? Action to pay accounts payable vouchers and payroll.
So moved.
Second. William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We definitely would have heard that if that didn't pass. Sorry about that. Okay, so note ordinances on first reading. Ordinance is on second reading. Ordinance 2023-03 to amend the 2023 salary ordinance by adding a part-time employee and changing the traffic safety education and enforcement overtime rate. Who has this?
The OPO and OWI was not on the original ordinance that I presented at the last meeting, and after that time Jimmy had informed me that the rate had changed. If you'd like to speak on that, that's fine, but I just wanted to.
They have increased the rate to get more people to work the projects. They were losing out a lot of money, Indiana especially, losing out a lot of money, so they increased that rate to entice the officers to come and work, so it's a win-win. If we get them to go out, we get the DUIs, and if we get enough hours, we get the equipment, so what about?
In the current salary ordinance? It's a time and a half, and the new guideline is double time.
Double time, yes.
And I see the part-time employee says from $22.50 to $25. Are we setting it at 25 an hour, or are we saying that would be the range?
I think it has been set at 25.
$22.50, yes.
Okay, so what is the $22.50?
I just feel like it's always good to put a range in.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
I do that on all positions.
Well, I thought we'd already fully discussed 25, that's why I was wondering.
If you want to mark the range, it's okay with me, I'll take it out.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, I think a range is good, but I just want to make sure that we're competitive for the position. Okay, so do we have any supervisor comment, any public comment on ordinances on the second reading? Counsel discussion?
Where we at?
Ordnance is on second.
Okay.
That's okay. You're not the only one to say I'm boring. I mean, all right, any counsel action?
Move, we approve ordinance 23-03 to amend the 2023 salary ordinance by adding a part-time employee, park employee, and changing the traffic safety education enforcement overtime, OPO and OWI rates.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion.
Are you leaving Dan out, you want to know?
Motion carries, yes. I mean.
He can vote one meeting every once in a while.
It's two, two a year.
Two, yeah, yeah.
Oh, so he can vote?
Yeah, you can be on there two times a year.
Just not on budget.
Right.
Okay, well, Dan, do you vote yes for the salary ordinance amendment? Thank you. And do you vote yes for the resolution dispose of surplus property? Okay.
And we also have accounts payable.
You vote for accounts payable? Okay.
All right.
All right.
So we get thumbs, okay.
Yes. He's like the Roman emperor, thumbs up or thumbs down, you know?
So that motion carries on the ordinance amendment.
Yes. All right. All right, flood report. Mike?
Yeah, we've marked the trees that need to be cut down. We're against a clock that's having down by picket first, so we have to, I have to, I have the easement sign, and I think we'll try to get them all signed tomorrow, so that way we can go ahead and bid the project.
To go with Mike's comment on that, we have already contacted two, the people, contacted two people for tree removal and part of that remediation area as well, so we're waiting on them for prices.
And April 1st, that date is because?
Dianne Harden doesn't like killing bats.
Gotcha.
I mean, it's really, you know, it's a stand-up road construction, so.
Ah, did I?
It basically is when the bats start coming out and start using the trees for refuge and.
Didn't know that. Good to know. All right. And that is for the flood report.
Right, Danny.
All right. Envision Ellisville update, Dan?
We had a round of task force meetings on the 28th of February. We had approximately 40 attendees, so I thought it was, it was well-attended. We will have another round of meetings on the 28th of March. The Taylor Group, last time I called them Taylor-Swift Group, and that's.
He did that same thing.
The Taylor Group attended the Plan Commission meeting February 2nd. They will be back there April 6th to provide an update on the comprehensive plan, and I want to invite anybody that wants to come to the, to these task force meetings, even if you haven't signed up, like, come on and enjoy the frivolity. We've got a meeting, let me see, the Heritage Trail, the town staff met with Taylor Group on the 13th of last month, and on that, Stewart property design is around here someplace. It was. You know where it is now, Mike?
I'm sorry?
The schematic of the Stewart property.
Go ahead, please.
That's my bad. I forgot to bring him in.
Okay, no, we don't need him here, but I'm just gonna tell everybody, we've got him if they want to look at him, and it might be nice to have him in here somewhere.
Yes, we have him here, and she is bad. And so they're worth looking at, and each rendering is worth a thousand words. And it inspires, and these renderings create questions, and we need input for this, these task force. And the task force, all they do is convey what people that are at the meeting think they'd like to see happen in Ellisville, and I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be a critic and say, "I don't think we're having enough people," and so we need to move on with the process, and so I don't want to leave anybody behind, or everybody, everybody, anybody that lives in Ellisville or in the community to have their say. I mean, this is, should be a process where everybody's involved. They don't have to be, but they ought to be, and then so when we have the final product or we decide we need to move on and create and produce a final product, they won't have to say, "Well, I don't know what's going on." So it's really important, and going to digress, these pictures or renderings, whatever you want, they say a lot about what we're thinking, and so it's what we believe is a good idea, and we believe that a lot of other people think part of it a good idea, but not enough a lot of other people. I'm telling you, I'd really like to see people get involved. All these task forces are about connectivity, about spending a bunch of money, about creating pressure to spend money that would have to be bonded for it, and the town might be on the hook for it, and this is our future, so whether you're for it or against it, whether you'd like to have it but you don't want to pay for it, we need people to get involved in that process, and there's too much going on and too little people involved, so. Other than that, it's.
It's why we're on that topic. I've had several questions about the cow.
The cow?
The cow. People wanting to really save the cow.
It is, we're going to take it down, Kip will probably take it down very carefully, and we're gonna have it redone, but it will go back up.
I've had several people wanting to know if the town would be willing to sell replicas of the cow.
He wanted me to.
The cow that's on top of the barn.
Okay, thank you.
It's kind of one of that iconic.
Maybe milk it for some money?
Yep.
The king of the pottens, he's here on red.
I'll be the straight guy, go ahead, yeah.
Well, that's an idea. We could, we could even use shared replicas.
I thought that rendering has the cow on the shelter house.
You know, the cow has taken on a life that's. And that goes back to people need to get involved. I mean, the Stewart Park, we're talking about trying to produce art or structure that has so much gravity that it is a point that everybody wants to come to. It's hard to do because everybody has different ideas what that means, and so, you know, I met with Bybee, and they seem to be on board with trying to help us any way they can, and but I really need people to bring up the cow and what kind of monument or sculpture or carving or what kind of artwork are you talking about? You start to do an art, everybody's gonna kick you after the fact, so thanks for bringing this up again. Everybody needs to get involved with this process.
Does the cow have a name?
Well.
Well, I was thinking Ellie.
Do we actually know that? I mean, just out of?
Yeah, the cow does not have a name, maybe we could have a contest and name it.
I was thinking that, but these online contests have never gone well, because you'll guess like Cow McCow, or.
Yeah.
Or.
Oh, do you make more faces?
Yeah, exactly.
I think less is more.
Here we go.
Yes. Exactly.
Well, if we could just save the cow, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Saving the cow, less is more, we'll think about it, but.
Gareth Blackwell made the cow.
I'm sorry?
Gareth Blackwell made the cow. He created it, he was a part of the Stewart family.
Okay. Sorry Denise, I didn't hear what you were saying. That's interesting, I don't know if anybody else did either.
Gareth Blackwell created the cow, and that's all I said. He was part of the Stewart family.
Okay, that's where Dan didn't finish his report.
And Gareth and Paul and a couple of the other people in the Stewart family actually built that barn down there, and when they were young, and I think if you look at the rendering of the, of the new barn, the cow is on it, the cow's on the front of that, if I remember right. And if you haven't seen those renderings, you gotta look at them, they are fantastic.
They are fantastic.
Take a picture, because some of them are in the foyer, right? Yes.
Do you still have to go get them? Not right now. I mean, we can, but you can go out in the foyer afterwards, and they will be on-site from now on for all the meetings.
Because I doubt I'll ever forget it again.
Well, I'll never say another thing about it.
But it is a way to get the public involved when we put them in the foyer and they come in to pay.
Or maybe if we put them on the website, it'd be even better.
It's working on that.
Denise is gonna talk about that a little.
That way they can look at them at 2:00 in the morning.
Yep.
When the foyer's closed.
True, very true.
Well, I think we've milked this topic for all it's worth, so we'll go on to new business. Engagement letter between the Town of Ellisville and Baker Tilly US LP, water rate analysis and Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission rate case filing.
Okay, I'll take this one.
And there's a, there's a paper crossways in your packet that pertains to this that I added after the fact.
This one?
Yeah. Excuse me.
That's all right. So it's been, since 2016, we've had a rate increase, and we did pretty well for two or three years, making the old rate work as it should, but it only has a life because of inflation and other factors, and so we have now superinflation, especially in our industry. I was signing claims before I came in here, and, and plastic 12-inch pipe is 46 cents a foot every foot. $46. Every foot's $46. We had a repair to make west of town, and we bought two sticks of 12-inch pipe, and it costs $1,800. So all the parts, full seal clamps now cost $400, $500 apiece when we make a repair. It's, our, our system needs some severe, not severe, but some updates to the system. We have a 10-year plan for what we want to do, and we have equipment that, I've got a $7,000 repair on my dump truck, it's getting old, we bought it just the other day, but that was 12 years ago. So anyway, we asked Baker Tilly to do a rate study, and they're prepared now to move forward to the next step where they present to the IURC. So they have given us scope of work and service fees, and I mean, A, it's time and expense not to exceed $45,000. In 2016, we paid $41,000 for the same thing. It's what it costs. So that was not quite an increase. Now, if we get into the ditches and have to wrestle around with the IURC, we could spend another $40,000 on top of that for discovery and extra work, I shouldn't turn pages, and, but I do not expect to get into B, so it's additional services, discovery responses, data requests, et cetera. They have to put it in there because if the IURC gives us a hard time, then they have to be prepared to move forward. So anyway, I need the board's approval to put them on the payroll and have them move forward. We, we really, I guess we probably should have started this a year, a year and a half ago, and so we need to move forward with the rate study. The rate study, the other page you got, right now with what we've give them, it looks like that the average monthly bill, which is currently $24.44 for 4,000 gallons, this is just for some perspective, there's three different alternatives, but I'll just go to the worst-case scenario, could increase by $6.38. That may not be enough by the time we get done with this, but it puts you in the ballpark of what you should expect of an increase. I put the percentage up there as well, it's 26.09% if you go alternate three, but it's absolutely necessary, and I can give you as much information as you need to see that we indeed need this rate increase.
Even at the 26.09% alternative three, you said we haven't had a rate increase since 2016?
That's correct.
So I mean, that only breaks down to about 3.5% to 4% a year, which is well below what the cost of going up through rate inflation.
I have a question, this is for a water rate increase, and in the top it talks about a debt service payback for sewer bonds. Why would sewer bonds be in your water?
I have no idea. We'll have to, if that question should be answered in public, which is okay with me, we'll have to talk to Doug, and you could call him yourself and get the answer from him, and then we can report back why that's in there. Because the next shoe to drop will be, next year there'll probably be a sewer rate request.
I know earlier, was it this year or late last year, we approved a company coming through and looking for leaks?
Yes.
Did they get that done?
They did not, and we have not paid them. They've sent me a bill, and this is the second cycle they haven't been paid, so I'm working on that, but that's part of our problem.
Okay, so I just want, so they haven't done the work yet, so.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
I could fill you in.
No, I just.
No, you should, you should ask.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So we need to entertain a motion. First of all, is there any other, is any public comment on this? Seeing none? Any counsel discussion or questions? Any counsel action?
Move, we approve the engagement letter between Town of Ellisville and Baker Tilly US LP, water rate analysis and Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission rate case filing.
I'll second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford? Pamela Samples?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Street Department request to purchase a truck equipped with chipper box and bucket.
Well, I'm sorry to tell you, at this time, I really don't have a truck for you to approve to buy at this time. We are presently, Jay is presently, I don't know what I would do without Jay Humphrey helping me with this, Jay's the one's put everything together as far as surplus in these two trucks, he's been looking for us different options of trucks to purchase, anywhere from used to new to different sizes. We are wanting to do away with two bucket trucks and go to one bucket truck with a chipper box on it, that way that truck would be actually exercised or used every month during our brush pickup because of the chipper box part of it, and not sit around for several months before we'd be ready to use the bucket again. So like I said, this time we are presently letting out bids for this bucket truck. It's a new bucket truck at this time with the chipper box, they call it like a forestry unit, is right around the $160,000 to $170,000 range. They are like a lot of things that's out there right now, it's gonna take several months for them to get here. One problem we have found, we found one just not too long ago, like a week or so ago, brand new, for that 160 area, and it was gone within five days. So they're, they're not staying, they're like a lot of equipment out there now, they're here and they're gone, so I just want to bring that to you at this time. But that's a 20- to 30-year asset, is it not? Yes.
Do you need, I mean, do you have the approval from us to jump on that?
Well, I don't know how this really works.
How do we do this?
Because if it's over $150,000, I think I have to have sealed bids, if that's correct. Not let, if you find it on a GSA price or a state bid, you don't have to. As long as it's GSA or state bid. I mean, ask Darla when she comes back to be sure, but that's how most of those items work. So if I find one that's in that GSA or state bid, I just need to come back to you there for approval to purchase it? That's how it usually works. Because what I'm gonna have to do.
Time-wise, depending on when it's, when you find one between meetings, if you lost one in five days.
I would say we give it to Mike for the authority to buy it.
Yeah, I think that.
And I also forgot to leave this out as well, Sandy did do this for us, she got ahold with the bank, the local bank, and got an amortization scheduled for us, and we have the funds to be able to finance this with what she presented, Jay, there's two different summaries, and to go with the, you know, naturally the less amount of months would be a less amount of interest, so either schedule of the amortization, we have the funds, correct, to be able to do this.
I, Jay assured me we did, I didn't have time to look at it today, so.
Me and Jay's looked over, we do, I mean, we've looked at it several, and we've only got a couple things in there.
Yeah, I think $60,000 is the number he gave me that you have available, and I think that those payments are below that. I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared to speak on that.
I wasn't either, so. I would say that we give Mike the ability to spend the money if, again, we need to move on this quickly when he finds one.
If, again, we need to move on this quickly when he finds one. But again, if you can find one, GSA or municipal bid, because a lot of times, the bigger cities will bid these out and leave it open for anybody else to jump on board. And Indiana is a reciprocatory state, so you could find any other state, state bid and buy off a bid as well.
Okay.
What does GSA stand for?
Government Service Account or Government Service something or other. Basically, it's the federal government negotiating these sealed bids for you. That way, you don't have to do them. Same process as a state bid, but it's national.
So, do you guys need to take that with a vote for him to be able to do that for us, or?
Let me ask, is there any public comment on this? Council discussion in action?
Again, I would prefer, due to the rapid nature that this is going to have to be solved, just to give the town manager the ability to spend the money, and choose whichever option as far as amortization goes or what we're doing financially.
Are you comfortable with that, Mike?
Yes.
Okay, then I guess, is that a motion, or?
Sure.
And that's to go along, if it falls GSA or state fund or state bid?
The motion is this, allow the town manager the latitude to determine scope and/or how we're doing this in total, and give him the ability to spend the money as necessary to make this problem go away.
What a motion that is.
I can add to it. I was going to use big words, but I thought, no, I'm just trying to spell it.
I'm going to have to listen to the tape on that one.
Dan, I have to comment.
Okay.
Dan says, tell them if they do this, it has to be run by Darla in the motion. Correct?
No.
Well, I mean, correct is what it's supposed to say.
I don't know what he means.
Yeah, I'm not sure what you're talking about, Dan. You're talking about the GSA pricing and things like that? Yeah, I mean, just check it to be sure, but that's how it is for every other GSA.
GSA is what we've done the last four times on our fire trucks.
And when you bid out police cars and things like that? Yeah. Or state bids or municipality bids?
It doesn't mean part of the motion. Tell them if they do this, it has to be run by Darla. That's part of the motion.
No, that's not my motion. Motion stands as it is.
I'll second. I'll second, I'll second that, Sandy.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford? Okay. Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Privilege of the floor, anybody in the public? Jennifer, you had, I see this nice thing here, so I'm pretty sure you have something to go over.
Good evening. My name is Jen Pearl, and I'm the president of the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. And we're a nonprofit that serves all of Monroe County, including Ellisville, in advancing economic development. That means fostering conditions for prosperity in the community. I came this evening to thank the Town of Ellisville and Town Council for their support as an ongoing BEDC member, executive committee member, and participant in many of our initiatives. I just wanted to give a short report this evening on kind of where your impact has gone, where your investment has gone the last few years. Many of you have this in front of you or one of these cards. So, this is our full annual report, and if you have one of these cards, you can scan the QR code to get to it on the website. And for those of you online, it's at BloomingtonEDC.com under the news section. So, really, what I have to share is kind of the overall economic context, the strategy that we're pursuing, and where your impact has gone with your investment over the last year. So, we're working in a local landscape where, you know, Monroe County is a hub for talent and innovation. Ellisville has a very, very unique position in that landscape because you have a vision for the future, you have land for growth, and a very business-friendly environment. We're part of an innovation corridor that runs from IU to NSWC Crane. And here in Ellisville, Smithville is a critical component of that because it provides connectivity that's needed for innovation. We're also part of some really important industry clusters. We have about 10,000 people out of a labor shed of about 82,000 that work in life sciences alone. We have another 10,000 that work in higher education. We have advanced manufacturing, defense, and a growing tech sector. And we have a highly educated workforce. 47% of workers in Monroe County have a college degree compared to just over 37% nationally. So, in terms of innovation and other assets here, it's pretty remarkable. And then, we're also a regional hub for employees. Roughly half of the employees for our major employers come from outside of Monroe County, and 30% of Crane employees live in the county. Ellisville has a very important piece of this puzzle because you've been developing housing, and you serve as corridor between Owen County, which is a part of our labor shed, which I know has been brought up a lot with Envision Ellisville and other efforts. It's also a really unique time in our community. You may have heard nationally that there's the Chips and Science Act. The federal government is investing billions of dollars into research and development and advancing technology. We also have the Indiana Ready Program, which has been advancing regions. And we have new leadership in places like IU and through upcoming local elections. So, if we do this right, it's a once-in-a-generation opportunity to launch ourselves into a really strong future. Ellisville is already ahead of the curve with the Envision Ellisville Program, which the BEDC has been really proud to support through Clark Greiner's support on the committee. So, what is the BEDC's strategy within this landscape? It's really twofold. One is to grow future-focused industries and employment. We do this by helping companies to find land, buildings, incentives, and other resources to grow jobs in the community. And Clark heads that up on our team. Within Ellisville, a few examples of that were our support for the Kehe project a couple of years ago and other local companies. The second piece of that is also ensuring, as a part of this larger strategy, is ensuring inclusive growth. So, how do we create a welcoming community to attract and retain the talent that's needed for our future? We've been working on this through the Economic Vitality Project, which you can get updates to both in the packet and on the back of your card here. That project is working to address jobs growth, workforce, land use, housing, quality of life, and other issues. And it dovetails really nicely with the Envision Ellisville Project. Okay, so, what have been the outcomes of your investment in all of these efforts? Over the last two years, over 3,000 jobs have been tied to BEDC-supported projects across Monroe County. Around 2,000 of those hires were completed, and the additional jobs are over the next three to five years. Also, over the last two years, we've seen very significant capital expenditures. So, those are investments in land and buildings and equipment, which all bolster the local tax base for all of our local governments. Over the last two years alone, excuse me, we've seen $612 million in capital expenditures tied to BEDC projects. So, that's well over a half-billion dollars that we've seen just on the projects that we've worked on. In terms of our next steps, one is with Envision Ellisville. We look forward to working with you all to support making the vision a reality, as well as sharing some of our business development prospects to inform things like land use strategy across the community. Second is, we are moving to become more proactive with our business attraction efforts to make sure that we're targeting those future-focused opportunities for the community that are a best fit. We have already seen some very marketable sites across Ellisville for employment growth and look forward to talking with you all more about that. Third is, whenever possible, and as you all would like, we are able to provide information on economic development tools that Ellisville can use to realize your goals, such as RDC work, such as tax abatements, TIF districts, and other tools for employment growth. We work with the IEDA across the state, and they also have some great training tools for local boards and commissions. So, if you have new people rolling onto these bodies that may benefit from learning more about these tools, we'd be very happy to connect you with them. And then finally, we welcome individual meetings with council members and other stakeholders in the community to talk about how we could do a deeper dive on these things. More details are in the annual report and on our website, but we are just very, very grateful for all that you do and your investment in these initiatives to advance to the future. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any council questions or discussion? All right. Supervisor comments? Oh, actually, Jill, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. Hi, I'm Jill Thurman from the Ellisville Chamber, and I want to invite town council members who are up for reelection and those who are on the ballot for Clerk Treasurer to participate in our candidate forum. We have two potential dates for this forum. That's Wednesday, April 26th, or Thursday, April 27th, from 8:00 AM to 9:30 AM. And email invitations have been sent out, and I'm waiting on a response from a couple of people. And we just want to know which date would work better for you and if you can make it to that forum. This would give our, give the community a chance to hear from our elected officials and help them better make a decision when it comes time to vote in that primary election. And even if you're running unopposed, we would still love your participation. So, if you need more information about this, or if you could please give me a response, just let me know if one of those dates would work, I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Valerie Dwar, business owner. I just, nothing as intricate or as involved as them. I would just like to thank you. At the last town board meeting, we sat here and you approved a four-way stop at First and Ritter. I drive that way every day to work, and it's so nice to see those signs already in place. Thank you.
Already got very positive feedback from some of the residents there, too, so. Yeah. Any issues, Jimmy? Have you heard anybody?
No, we haven't.
Good, good. All right, any other public comment? Seeing none, supervisor comments? Mike?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the BEDC for all the help they provide Ellisville. I mean, when I first became the town manager, I think I was just interim town manager then. Kehe was looking to come into town. I think Jen had just taken her job, and they, they, her and Clark and the rest of the crew, they were instrumental in making sure that Kehe landed here. It's a really big deal that I think already we take for granted that we have such a nice facility, employs so many people. And is a good, is a good template for what we want to do in the future. But the BEDC was, if it wasn't for them, I'm not sure I could have maneuvered it. I don't have the expertise or the background, and two heads or even three heads are better than one. And so, I really want to thank them. And that's not the only project we work on. There's a lot of people that look at Ellisville, and there's a lot of back and forth with the BEDC, so I really appreciate them being there to help us.
Jimmy?
Mr. Park is doing well. I want to let you know, my sponsors or helpers from the Main Street and the Chamber gave me the thumbs up to go ahead and start planning for the annual memorial service. So, we will have, Parks Board will be sponsoring that, so just wanted to give you a heads up on that. So, we had a nice crowd last year, but has the first one since the pandemic.
Right.
So, we expect that to be bigger yet. We'll be honoring two local veterans this year, so.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
We started a different style of dispatching for the fire services this last week between the Monroe Fire District and the Ellisville Fire Department. And basically, what that means is we're now sending units, closest unit to the call regardless of the jurisdiction. And it's, we've received aid from the district as well as giving it. And it's knocked anywhere from five to seven minutes off getting help to some of these people in need, so that's a big benefit. And we're looking at trying to make a few other tweaks in the next few months to hopefully better serve the community. So, it's a good thing.
How did this come about?
Basically, it's been talked about since back in the 70s. I can't tell you why. It never did go, but the district and Ellisville had a meeting a few months ago and thought, hey, we ought to look at this. And it just, everything started to fall into play, and we thought, we'll give it a whirl and see how it works. And so far, it's working out great.
Terrific.
Tomorrow, myself and Jay Humphrey, as well as Ron Van Devene, or the MS4 operator for Stormwater for us, we're going to be going to Purdue University for what they call Road School. There's a lot of different lectures and stuff that goes on there, and we can bring ideas for our town as well. Also, I want to send out my condolences and offer prayers to the, my foreman, Jay Humphrey's family. He lost his grandfather over the weekend. So, that's all I got.
Okay. Denise?
I just wanted to let you know that Town of Ellisville Facebook page is now up and running. And so, it'll be running along with our webpage, so you'll see some different things. It's under Town of Ellisville, Indiana.
All right. Sandy?
I just have a little thank you note that we received in the mail that I'd like to read to the council. "Thank you for the new playground equipment at Campbell's Park and the brand-new playground by the Ellisville Town Hall. We have played at both spaces a couple of times already and are looking forward to many more fun times as the weather improves." It's Reenie? It's what it looks like. Reenie Cowden and Mimi Owen. So, there has been some negative about our comments on Facebook, and so, it's nice to get a positive one about our playground equipment.
Awesome. Any council discussion, comments, or anything?
Just one comment. Want to congratulate both Edgewood's Winter Percussion and the Guard. They're two separate entities, both part of the marching band. Winter Percussion won first in their event this weekend, and I believe Guard was second. So, they're both moving on towards state competitions. Really appreciate those teachers and the staff and the parents who help with that because that is no joke work. They put in 10, 12, 15 hours some days, and they make sure it happens at a very, very high level.
Anything from anyone else? Seeing none and no other business but for the board, we adjourned.